Attention, please. Can I have your attention?
Yes.
We're gonna go ahead and just wanna say a few words before we begin. Dave's gonna run through all of our retirees. I know I see a few. Rhonda, Lauren, Carol, Rocco. Okay, those of you that are here. We can't thank you enough for all of your service to the district. We appreciate the many, 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 many years of service that you've provided to our students and to our staff. Dave's gonna highlight the number of years here, but we certainly can't thank you enough. We're sad to see you all leave us at the end of the month, but we hope that you have a wonderful, enjoyable, restful, relaxing retirement, and you're always welcome back, whether you're in the office, in the classroom. But again, we thank you for all of your service, and you will be greatly missed. All right. We're gonna have the board members come up here, and we're just gonna, similar to what we did with the new tenure recognition, we're just gonna have a receiving line here. And when we call the retiree up, we'll just give an opportunity for each board member and administrator to congratulate you personally.
Maybe we'll remake the tunnel?
We can do a tunnel if you'd like.
All right. So to start out here, Rhonda Batriel, fifth grade teacher for 37 years. Good luck.
Thank you.
Richard Gordon, sixth grade teacher, 26 years. Carol Clark, administrative aide, 27 years. Patricia Cottrell, fifth grade teacher, 35 years. Lauren Krillman, RTI reading teacher, 17 years. Kono Tomoto, math teacher, 23 years. Melissa Dumjanenko, teaching assistant for 15 years. Pam Fiallo, math teacher, 21. Roseanne Garcia, food service helper, 15 years. Wendy Hamm, teaching assistant, 15 years. Maureen Hennessy, food service helper, 25 years. Martine Hansinger, school nurse, 29 years. Carol James, math teacher, 25 years. Timothy James, fourth grade teacher, 30 years. Gene Cavell, teaching assistant, 25 years. Russell Kinzel, bus driver, 14 and a half years. Lisa Lozinski, second grade teacher, 30 years. Suzanne Lawrence, teaching assistant for 16 years. Uncle Nelly, director of special ed, 20 years. Kelly Nugent, library media specialist, 10 years. Teaching assistant, 20 and a half years. Christine Paul, Spanish teacher, 21 years. James Pellet, custodian too, 36 years. Gary Pluff, business teacher, 22 years. John Vazinas, the driver messenger, 10 years. Ransom Walters, bus driver, four years. And Sally Woods, a bus attendant for six and a half years.
So we're gonna ask all of the retirees that are here if you could group in the center here for a picture. Sarah's gonna take a photograph, and then we're gonna transition over to the board meeting, which begins in a few moments. Thank you again, congratulations.
Congratulations.
Recording in progress.
Okay, thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. For those who have not been to one of these, we did have to open the meeting a little earlier in order to go into executive session, and then we went out of executive session, we go into retiree reception, and we will discuss that in a little bit. But we are a little out of order because of that, so what we got through was the call to order, we'll call approval of agenda. So that brings us down to, we do need a motion to go back into open session, so I'd like to make a motion to go back into open session. Matt, second.
I'll second.
Tony, any discussion?
Aye.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and we now have... Eight? Eight, two, okay. With that, we are up to election of officers. We did have one of our board officers resign not too long ago, so we will be electing new officers for the remainder of the school year, and then, as usual, new officers will then be elected on July 10th again. So this is just to cover the interim based on that resignation. So with that, with that, we will move on to election and oath of office for the president. Board of Education, resolve that the nominations will be in order for the office of the president of the Board of Education of the Balden Hill Central School District. Motion. Motion. Or do we do nominations? Sorry, we usually do this, we don't need a motion to do, no. Okay, so do I have any nominations for?
I'll nominate Jeff Marier as president. He has been serving the role of vice president for the year. He has been filling in as president since he absents, and I believe it is in the best interest for him to continue to maintain that relationship as board leadership.
I'd like to second that motion.
Okay, so nomination by Matt, second.
I just have a clarifying question, because I was a little unscathed, and I did ask for some clarification. As you're sitting in role as the VP right now, so I thought we were, we were doing this from June 30th until July 10th, and then we would continue in the role. If there's no president, the vice president steps in, which you've been doing. So I'm just asking for clarification as to, why aren't you just staying in the role as VP and continuing until the rest of the month is over?
Well, we are opening up nominations, so I guess it's whatever the board majority desires to look forward to. So we have a nomination for president, and that will run through the end of whoever is nominated their term or until July 10th, whichever comes first, and clarify that. And then whoever is, if, for example, I'm nominated, then the vice president continues on, they would automatically assume. But if, if the person who's president becomes president, we did get clarification on this, if the person that does become president is the current vice president, then they would automatically assume the president role if elected, and then the vice president would ... Yep. Okay, any other nominations? Being none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, so that would be seven one. Okay. I'm honored to take the seat.
Thank you.
Do the oath.
Dr. Davis has that one for you.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of president of Balden Hill Central School District Board of Education according to the best of my ability. So with that, that moves us on to the next section, so we would now be required to take nominations for the office of vice president. Resolve that the nomination will be in order for the office of vice president of the Board of Education of the Balden Hill Central School District, which is at the board's discretion. The vice president has the same powers as a president if the president is absent or incapacitated to lead meetings, sign official papers, et cetera. Do I have any nominations for the board of, for the office of vice president?
I nominate Victor Jenkins. He has had previous leadership experience on this board of education, and I think that he would be able to serve well in that position.
Okay, I'd like to second that nomination.
I'll second.
Okay, very good. Hand over the second. Okay, any other nominations? Being none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
That would be seven one. Congratulations, Vic. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. This is my favorite part of the meeting, where we get to honor our students and all of their hard work. That's really what we're here about, is students, and having parents and children come to the meeting is so important, and just really reframes everything for all of us and makes us proud. So with that said, I do have a few words that I would like to share. CW Baker High School senior Benjamin Smith earned a gold key in the 2023 Central New York Scholastic Art Awards in January. We have a picture of his artwork that Joe's going, or Dr. Joe's going to move up, there you go. His piece titled Poseidon Platter won the ceramic and glass category. Gold key winners automatically advance to the national competition. Ben's artwork was selected as the gold medal winner in the National 2023 Scholastic Art Awards. Ben and his family will attend the national ceremony at Carnegie, Carnegie Hall in New York City on Thursday, June 8th. Congratulations, Benjamin, and if you'd like to come up for your certificate?
Well, no, we don't, we need a certificate first. Careful with the wire.
Sorry about that.
Everyone look where it's here.
Thank you. The Balden Hill Indoor Drum Line earned the 2023 New York State Percussion Scholastic A Stand Still Gold Medal Champions. The championship was held in April. The drum line includes 14 Baker High students, 14 Durkey Junior High School students, and two Ray Middle School students. Tonight, we honor the drum line for their hard work, dedication. We have many members of the drum line here tonight. Members of the drum line from Durkey Junior High are currently in the auditorium at CW Baker High School, entertaining their families and showcasing their hard work at Durkey Band Concert. Coordinator Casey Vanderstau and Director Secondary Curriculum Instruction Renee Burnett will be bringing their certificates to them. We are also proud of the drum line for shining on the national stage. Thank you to our director, Dan English, and his assistant director, Aaron Stoner, for a great season. I'm going to announce the Durkey Junior High students first, since they're not here, and then I'm gonna ask Renee to run these certificates up to the high school. So we have Alyssa Bellinger, eighth grade, Evan Bracy, eighth grade, Adrian Clay, eighth grade, Ian Duffy, ninth grade, Jacob Gill, eighth grade, Jason Hotchkiss, ninth grade, Garrett McDermott, ninth grade, Ryan Martin, eighth grade, Aden McLeah, eighth grade, Caitlin Moak, eighth grade, Ari Alai, Oli, he said, eighth grade, Mason Truex, ninth grade, Levi Williams, eighth grade, Brianna Zoff, ninth grade. Ray, oh, congratulations. Okay, now, for our CW Baker students and our Ray Middle School students, if they could come up when they're called and get your certificate? Dr. Joe, are you good?
Yeah.
Oh, we're good, okay. Vincent Bagan, 10th grade.
We'll do one big group picture.
Sorry if I mispronounce names. Tyler Bracy, 12th grade. Isaac Sisson, 10th grade. Jake Conger, 12th grade. Austin Cox, 10th grade. Anna DeJohn, 12th grade. Zoe Fortune, 10th grade. Marissa Jilaland, 11th grade. Isaac Goss, 10th grade. Jackson Kudarakas, 10th grade. Chase McLeah, 11th grade. Piyomai Olaisai, 10th grade. Ray Cross, 10th grade. Ray Middle School, Jackson Brunden, 7th grade. Casey Williams, 7th grade. And if you could get the music staff up here for the photo, and I wanna say congratulations for our program. Also, after, after we finish up here, there is a reception in the other room with cookies and snacks to, for the students.
Everyone kind of together.
After we're done with this part of the schedule.
Can I have some people kind of move forward and circle? If you're shorter, we'll...
Can you guys move in just a little bit?
Tall guys are over there, holy cow.
All right, step over this way. Perfect. Everyone look at me, oh my god. I didn't know they were all... Wait, get a hand for you guys. I need this backup, just a little bit, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Go for it, go for it.
All right, how about it, parents?
Silence.
Okay, you can't leave yet, we still have some exciting things to do before the snacks come out, so, oh, go ahead and take a seat, you just can't leave the room. Oh, we got lots of food for you anyway. That's right. Well, congratulations, everybody. Again, another great year for everyone. Ben, it was a pleasure seeing your artwork there at the art show. Congratulations, enjoy your trip to New York City there for that. Okay, now we got a special recognition here. As folks know, the Board of Education approved the appointment of Dr. DeBarbury pending a contract at the February 21st, 2023 board meeting. Tonight, we are happy to announce that on the agenda in the new business section coming up soon, we will be voting to approve Dr. Barbury's contract, which is the final step in approving our new superintendent of schools. Please join us in congratulating Dr. DeBarbury on a bright future and bringing great stability to our district with a student-centered philosophy. Congratulations, Vic.
Just wanna say that I appreciate the support from our school community, the school board, and our teachers and staff. I can't thank you enough for this opportunity, and I know I will do whatever I can to continue moving us in the right direction, focusing on students, and making sure that Beville
for our current board members.
is highly regarded and recognized for the outstanding opportunities that we bring for
New York State School Board Association created a recognition program designed to acknowledge
our students. So, thank you.
school board members who strive to continually expand their governance, knowledge, and skills. I'd like all board members to thank you, so we're gonna get a picture out here with The program is comprised of four achievement levels, which can be reached by accumulating you, and I'd like to invite your family up if they'd like to join us, and if the board points for participation in training activities that are offered by NISBA. can join us for this one.
Congratulations, Vic. Congratulations.
The following board members of the Balden Hill Central School District have earned
Congratulations, Vic. Congratulations.
the following and will also be recognized in NISBA's newspaper on board. Shelley Gekel, level one. And Sam Straven, level one. Okay, as we move on into our program, for those students that are here anxiously awaiting, we have lots of food next door. If you'd like to go into the reception, you can't leave till it's all gone, and then in a little bit, we will have some cake also on the way out for you. So, congratulations, and we will continue on with the meeting. You are more than welcome to head over and eat. You're not allowed to leave without going in the room next door. Okay with that?
If our administrators would can help cutting the cake, that would be great, thank you.
Okay, moving on to correspondence board activities and committee reports. First up on the list today was our CNY School Board Association Dinner. A few of us were able to attend that at the beautiful lodge of Skinny Alice Falls. Would anybody like to comment on the event or the speakers or anything like that?
It was, it was a nice event. It's always a nice event that Central New York School Board puts on. Had a, had a kind of intriguing keynote speech by the president of MACNE, talking about some of the exciting opportunities coming up in Central New York. So, a good, a good chance to also talk with some of our fellow board members from across the region.
Okay, you? Point?
Just to echo what Matt said, it was very interesting, a lot of fun, good to meet other people and kind of get their perspective on things that are going on in their districts. Great keynote speaker, had a lot to do with the micron, and how that's gonna affect Central New York's education system and infrastructure and all those fun things. They acknowledged a lot of other members, and are you gonna say what you want as your door prize, or did you want me to? I'll go ahead. No, you can do it. But it was great.
I never win anything, and somehow I won the Bluetooth speaker, and so, now, just to echo that, I think the best thing about these dinners is just the, you know, networking we can do with other, other school members, school board members from other districts, and learning what they're doing and, you know, interacting with them. So, to your point, the micron, the discussion on micron from the TACB rep really brought to light the need, and something near and dear to my heart, in my role at the community college, is the training needed for the trade. So, you know, Dr. DeBarbury, I'm sure you're focusing on that and the need for that. All school districts are gonna be inundated with that, those type of things, and the need is gonna be tremendous, so, look forward to that, and look forward to those programs coming in. With that, the DEI Committee on the 31st, anybody wanna speak to that? Okay, uh, Mia?
Um, just to echo what Matt said, it was very interesting, a lot of fun, good to meet other people, um, and kind of get their perspective on things that are going on in their districts. A great keynote speaker, had a lot to do with the micron and how that's gonna affect, um, Central New York's education system and infrastructure and all those fun things. Um, they acknowledged a lot of other members, um, and are you gonna say what you won as your door prize or did you want me to? I'll go ahead. But no, it was great.
I never win anything and somehow I won the Bluetooth speaker then, so, um, now, just to echo that, I think the best thing about these dinners is just the, uh, you know, networking we can do with other, other school members, school board members from other districts and, uh, learning what they're doing and, you know, interacting with them. So, uh, to your point, the micron, uh, the, the discussion on micron from the tech rep, um, really brought to light the need and something near and dear to my heart. And my role at the Community College is the training needed for the trade. So, um, you know, Dr. DeBarbury, I'm sure you're focusing on that and the need for that. All school districts are gonna be inundated with that, those type of things and the need is gonna be tremendous. So, look forward to that and look forward to those programs coming in. With that, uh, the DEI Committee on the 31st, anybody wanna speak to that?
I can talk on that. Uh, another great presentation. Uh, we talked about, um, we did a, like a round, what do you call it, a circle? And we passed around and just talked about some of the things, um, that we would use, one word to describe the year, uh, one good thing and then one thing we were looking forward to, uh, with our teams going forward. I sat with the community team and we discussed, uh, the Halloween costume drive that we're working on. And then also potentially, uh, doing a book or a movie of the month of the quarter, um, to, uh, I guess focus on those, those issues. Uh, there were students there that gave their thoughts as well. Azan was there. There was two students from Ray, um, B or so? Oh, yeah, I almost take it away. Um, but they, uh, they all represented it themselves in the, in the schools phenomenally and, uh, had very insightful, um, thoughts on, um, what's going on in the schools. So, those are always fun meetings.
I want to add something, okay? Are you thinking, like, this piece really gets stolen from me, but anyway, um, I had the pleasure of attending the meeting as well. Um, DEI is something that I've been interested in since the beginning of this position, like towards the end of last year. Um, obviously, there's still a ton of work to be done, but it was nice to sit in a room like that with a group of adults and the two students from Ray, who did a fantastic job. Any that were there know that it's awkward as a kid sometimes to sit in a room of adults like that and partake in conversations, but I think they did a very good job, especially at such a young, uh, level. And that makes me excited, like, the student perspective that, you know, when those kids are in high position, sitting in 12th grade, how much interaction should be between students and adults throughout the district? So, yeah, it was just nice to be able to attend and see the happenings behind the scenes of DEI and just the four.
And one thing I wanted to add to kind of go along with that, um, the Acceptance Coalition had their Pride Walk on Saturday and I heard that was really, uh, nice to be attended, um, by students and adults. And they raised money, um, for charity and, uh, yeah, so that was a really good thing to get out there and support each other.
Any other comments on that? Okay, um, next up, uh, special board meeting on the 1st at the Transportation Center. Comments?
So, it's, uh, just, uh, we went directly into executive session.
And Audit Committee meeting earlier today. Anybody from the committee wanna discuss that?
Yes, um, we are going to review the planning, um, for the Fall Audit Committee, for the External Audit. And we will discuss and take action and with the corrective, um, plan in, in the fall, at the Fall Meeting. And the Internal and External Audit were clean. The Internal Audit was the first time the company had done the audit and it was reviewed very extensively. And the IT Audit, um, was also done. And always, you know, there's things that we can improve on, but overall, both audits were very clean. The Internal Audit will be adopted, um, accepted, and, um, we'll have a corrective plan for that. And then our Fund Balance Management Plan will be, um, discussed at our Board of Education meeting in July. Um, our Claims Audit Review, um, there was really nothing to report. Everything was working smoothly. And the district is working on a more efficient way, um, for a Treasury Report and that will be coming out in the weekly letter. And Kim, have I forgotten anything?
No, I think you did a nice summary. The only thing I do want to mention is in, um, the action that we asked for at the end of the month, as we, our corrective action plan from last year, we were missing one date and this date is asking for the Board to reapprove that for the corrective action for last year's internal audit. So, we'll be bringing that forward as well. It's just gonna look a little weird that we're doing two corrective actions. So, I just want to point that out to the Board ahead of time.
Okay, with that, are there any other activities?
I was just gonna bring up that we had the Retiree Reception at the Board Meeting and saying congratulations to all of our retirees.
Yes, we had, what, 20 retirees this year, I believe? We wish them all the best and it was a, um, it's nice to see those that, uh, were able to make it and congratulations to them all. Vic?
Well, I, I think it's appropriate here to mention the sports scene, right? Because the boys' lacrosse celebrated another sectional title. Am I correct? Is that fourth grade? Fourth grade, fourth, yeah. So, congratulations Coach Wilcox and all the boys. And the girls, uh, won a sectional title, girls' lacrosse. So, that's, uh, what they, uh, second in the row at least, obviously, since they won states last year. Uh, the other thing, the girls' softball team won a sectional, I believe this is their first ever sectional title. And our able photographer here is, uh, who was probably at the game, right, Matt?
Yes.
Yeah, I knew it, I knew it. So, the game's on tape, back provided if you need it. Also, the, oh, ladies, what was the yacht or the rowing, rowing, they got, was it sixth in the nation for the, the, which was it? The fours, I guess, the novice winners? Thank you, thank you. I didn't steal your fort, did I? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Excuse me, just bump me next time, okay? But, but, uh, just congratulations. That's an outstanding performance by a lot of young scholar athletes. So, my congratulations.
Our congratulations. And good luck to those that are continuing on. So, I forgot I have the mic that I can give off people. I'm gonna have a big number on that for Azan. Nobody say anything next meeting and Azan's listening. Any other?
Um, I attended, uh, last Wednesday, uh, the Ray, uh, 7th and 8th Grade Band Orchestra and, I'm sorry, Chorus Concert at Baker. Again, it was another great opportunity to see all the kids perform. Looking forward to next year, seeing the kids from 7th Grade moving up to 3rd, to seeing them continue in, uh, their performances. And just another great production put on by all three, um, music teachers and all the kids about.
Okay, uh, with that upcoming, I'm narrowing it down to the end of the year here. So, looking forward to graduation, uh, on the 23rd. We are off, uh, on the 19th for Juneteenth. Keep our fingers crossed for great weather on Friday, the 23rd, for all the graduates this year. Um, and with that, we have one more meeting for the year on the 26th. One item that we should probably talk about in Board Roundtable is scheduling the dates for the RFPs. Uh, we do have, those are due on Friday and we have very little time to get through though. So, um, I think at this point, we'll, we'll bring that up at Board Roundtable, uh, in order to move on right now. But I think we'll talk about that and the potential interview dates and things like that when we get there. So, not opposed, we can talk about that in Board Roundtable. Okay, so with that, Azan, the floor is yours.
You guys are honestly exceptional still, I think it's happened all year long. But I guess, I think it's a good thing because you all care as much as I do. I, maybe, okay, um, a lot of it was already talked about. But, uh, just to reiterate that the boys and girls won the sectional championships. Uh, the girls' softball obviously did and then girls', it was the novice team came in sixth place in the nation. Which is, I talked about it the last time, it's not very often that we even have a team that makes international, so coming in sixth places, exceptional. Um, boys' track and field also was, uh, in session championships. They win, they won, yeah. Um, we have six school days at the high school left, uh, all year long. I said that's weird. It's really weird, like, the next time I present here, I'm not gonna be a senior anymore. It's, it's just weird. Uh, it's exciting though, like, school's coming to a close. A lot of what's going on is, for right now, Baker is final projects. We dissected a rat today in AP Biology and a shark last week. So, fun things like that. It's not as funny, it's not funny. It was, like, kind of rope, anyway. Also coming, so graduation is coming up and then, uh, I think we also have a senior lunch or something like that coming up. I don't, yeah, okay. Elementary walk is coming up soon. I talked about it at the last meeting. Uh, there's something on 140 scholarships that are going to be awarded to students in the next five days. And there's also athletic awards coming out. I talked about DEI, um, and again, it was just nice to be able to sit there and just see all of the conversations being had. I think I mentioned the last meeting that I wanted to, I asked the administrators about the district, highlight the favorite moment of the year, just because this is the last meeting I'm having, it's like, uh, before school's still in session. So, a few of them were able to get back about that. At from Ray, Ms. Morgan shared, maybe they had a staff basketball game, which itself from the sounds of it was pretty fun. She says the students gather around to cheer on their teams and it was like watching the final four of the game, uh, due to some of the roses, uh, some of the people pulling. Um, and I guess a lot of students said that it was their favorite moment of the year. I feel like that's something from Baker, but Mrs. Turpney probably wouldn't agree with me. Thanks for that. Um, at Van Buren, the Red Grammar Concert, uh, during the Mental Health Renaissance Month. And during the ceremony, the entire school made a tribute to a fifth grade teacher. That's, I don't know, concerts are always, or assemblies are always fun at elementary school and I guess putting the attention towards something that positive is nice. Um, and then there was some just more, I guess, normal things that are going on throughout the district. Mr. Conklin shares that at Eldon, the girls on the Brotherhood Organization, they are holding a fundraiser to the Gosnell Children's Hospital. Uh, students are bringing in a dollar so that they can bring, I think it was today actually, so they could bring in their favorite stuffed animal. And all that money is being given to the hospital. Uh, at Palmer, I've been talking about, uh, some, or field trips that are taking place. So, 2nd, 3rd, 4th, and 5th Grade all had assembly or field trips that happened. The field trips at Palmer are also coming up and there's a whole bunch of school-wide picnics and assemblies. Um, and then, I guess, I never really asked Mrs. Turpney about her favorite moment this year. I'm kind of realizing now, but I'm gonna talk about mine. So, there's kind of a few things. I told Mrs. Nicolletti she had to stay until I was done with this, just because we talk a lot about art and how fantastic the art is here. And I took ceramics this year. And I feel like Mrs. Nicolletti's, I'm like, it's probably gonna kill me tomorrow, just because I'm giving her the recognition. But I just feel like there's a lot of teachers in our, Baker specifically or across the district, there's a lot of people behind the scenes that do a lot of work to make these things happen. Um, and Mrs. Nicolletti is somebody that stood out to me this year, just because she cares a lot of hope she does. And I just think that it's important that every once in a while, teachers such as her get the recognition that they deserve. So, to Mrs. Nicolletti and then all of the other teachers throughout the district, they're on above and beyond what it means to be a teacher. I'm saying thank you from my perspective and on behalf of all of the students. So, I'm gonna say that my favorite moment has just been seeing teachers that care so much about their jobs, uh, doing what they love and, like, inspiring us to do the best that we possibly can. You're definitely allowed to leave now, but the last thing in my portion is I wanted to introduce Maya Pangera, who will be my, she's taking over for me next year. So, she'll be next year's, um, student representative for the Board of Education. And just a few things about her, from what I hear, she's pretty interested in what she's doing. It sounds like she's done a lot to work up to this position. So, just a few quick things, so that she took part in Student Advisory Council. Uh, she was also a member of the Mental Health, Mental Wellness Committee, a member of Student Council, Interact Club, Ski Club, the 2020 Activity Fair, and helped organize the semi-formal. Um, a lot of those things are things that I do as well and it's a lot of work that goes into a lot of events like that. So, it's all that she's dedicated and I look forward to seeing you succeed next year. So, that's, uh, kind of the close to this one. One more and then that's that.
Thank you, Azan, and welcome to the Board next year. Big shoes to fill up here, but I'm sure you'll do great. Okay, uh, with that, we will move on to our Request to Speak portion. Do we have any requests to speak?
Yes, we do. We have three.
Three requests to speak, okay. Um, so we do have, uh, some rules around requests to speak that I will go over briefly. Uh, we do appreciate everyone, uh, who comes and takes the time to speak to the Board. Um, they're, they are limited to three minutes per speaker in a total of 30 minutes total, so three, we should not have a problem with that. Um, one of the, uh, important rules here, they should not include any specific individuals or positions. Unless appropriate, the Board of Education will respond by letter to the individual's comment or questions. Board members will not engage in conversation or comment during this period. Specific employee or student concerns should be communicated to the Superintendent of Schools during regular business hours. Uh, if there are more than five individuals speaking on the same issue, please limit the topic to just five speakers of your choice. Uh, we are all here for our students and it is expected that everyone speaking tonight will follow these rules and everyone present will model the behaviors that are expected of the students in the school district. The public is also invited to listen to the meeting's live stream on this, on the VC, VCD website. So, with that, I'll hand it over to Kim.
Our first speaker is Sarah Allen in regards to SEAL, or Alom, I'm sorry, in regards to SEAL of Civic Redness.
Good evening. I am Sarah Alom, a senior at Baker High School. And as part of my Muslim redness project, I will discuss the representation of Muslim holidays in our district. As a Muslim student, the representation of my holidays has always affected me in one way or another. Beginning in elementary school, choosing between education and religion was a decision I should have had to make. Now that I'm older and there are more young Muslim students in the district, I have a chance to prevent the youth from having to make the same decisions I had to. I've had to give presentations, take standardized tests, and simply come to school in academically rigorous days when I should have been focusing on my connection to my faith. When it comes to practicing non-Christians in this context Muslim students, the district has not supported them adequately. Many administrators don't understand what it means to be a Protestant Muslim. For example, Ramadan is more than simply fasting from sunrise to sunset. It's the holiest month of the Islamic year. Muslims devote their time and focus to improving their spirituality. During Ramadan, fasting students would rather do anything but be overlooked before, for it's a time of improving spirituality. I suggest the administrators in the district to increase flexibility by assigning deadlines that conforms to these students' needs. This would certainly make them feel seen and much more at ease considering how much they're tackling on top of drastically changed eating habits. I also think that better discussion of religion in history classes would establish a basis of knowledge that goes deeper than what is shown in the media. I remember when we learned about Abraham and religion in pre-Arab world history. Christianity was talked about for at least a week, whereas Islam and Judaism received roughly half a period of discuss, discussion each. If the majority of students in the district are Christian, why would we teach so much of the, of the religion to them? This gap in education allows stereotypes perpetuated by the media to fester, but filling this gap would change how Muslims and Islam as a whole are viewed. Simply changing this mindset on a local level would alleviate these students' pain of pursuing themselves as an inconvenience for simply being a religious minority. In recent news, President Joe Biden has made a proclamation in 2021 declaring April to be Arab American Heritage Month. And New York State follows suit the following year. Although not every Arab American is Muslim, a significant, a significant amount of them are. And, and most, if not all, Muslim students in our district are Arab descent. Acknowledging this new proclamation simply on a local level would provide visibility to the Arab community, which is, which is a significant step in acknowledging, um, and appreciating the Arabs in our community. I suggest adding the fact that April is Arab American Heritage Month, the district calendar, and if possible, incorporate learning about some parts of Arab culture in class as well. I, I also advise these ideas be used for Black History Month, Asian American, Pacific Islander Heritage Month, Autism Awareness Month, and other months of similar nature to promote a welcoming student, welcoming s, school environment, not only for existing students of marginalized communities, but also for incoming students of families who have jobs in the area. I recognize and appreciate the progress being made. Awarding one of the, a days, a day off is a start, but there are two reviews each year. And because the Islamic calendar follows a lunar schedule, both may fall within the school year. There's much more progress to be made and selfishly speaking, this start came a little too late. However, as their advocate and the oldest Muslim student in the district, I hope these changes will make the school experience for my siblings who cannot be here tonight and the Muslims within our district easier and help them feel as though they truly belong. Thank you for allowing me this opportunity to speak all tonight, it's been an honor.
Thanks for taking your time, Azan. Would you mind, uh, leaving your paper there so we can get that to the, uh, just so the Board can, uh, or she, you can give it to Ms. An, Ms. File there. Thank you again. Okay, next up.
Our next speaker is Lindsay Hacketson and her topic is Board of Ed Member Actions.
Um, good evening and thank you for the time tonight. Um, I want nothing more than our community to be able to move on from the actions of a particular individual last year. I want to stop talking about the broken record that is transparency. I want the conversation to be shifted back to where it needs to be on supporting the education in our classrooms. I've heard Board members say that they're committed to transparency and wanting to move our district forward, but sometimes actions speak louder than words. Unfortunately, a few of our Board members aren't allowing our community to be able to move forward. Recently, two Board members were listed as references and our current representative to the Bosse's Board, a longtime Board member, wrote a glowing recommendation for our almost former superintendent, for Manatee and Osceola School District from Florida. former superintendent, Romani Tiana Osceola, school district leader from Florida. How does continuing to support him support our students? Did you inform your fellow board colleagues of your decision to be a reference? Or if this was done without your permission, when did you learn of it? Did you inform anybody? Or did you just assume that no one involved in this would hear about a superintendent surgeon Florida? If you feel that this individual is highly ethical and has the highest level of integrity, I'm really not sure if we have that same definition of the words ethical and integrity. Further, if you're not here and committed to moving our district in a positive and collaborative manner, please stop down so that others that want to see this district succeed can stop in. Thank you.
Thank you for taking the time to speak to us. And I believe that means we have one more, correct?
Sally Dagger in regards to the board. Thank you for taking the time to allow the public to come and speak. I did spend a great deal of time thinking about how I wanted to word my statements, but my words are already mostly repeated, and I'm directing my statement to a couple of board members of whom they should know who they are. Employed one year, two and a half months into the district, how can we give recommendations to a former employee who in October eighth, twenty twenty-two placed Balden South Central School District in a most embarrassing position by audience surfing, by appearing as an intoxicated person, and later being arrested? The compromise has extended paying a salary through until June twenty twenty-three and health insurance through October twenty twenty-three. The people I'm referring to, how can you honestly represent yourself as a member of the board of the Balden South Central School and make decisions effectively and be trusted with what you say and what you really mean? Did you inform your fellow board members you were going to give recommendations to this particular person? Secondly, did you know your names were honestly going to be placed on an application that was going to be public knowledge? With this information and with the action that I saw, I certainly am recommending a resignation to this present board that has been placed in this position. Also, a former board member of whom I served with for several years had forty-one years of service to the Balden South Central School as a board member, wrote a most glowing letter of recommendation for this person that I just spoke about. I also am requesting a resignation, and the board worked on this because she now serves on the BOCSIS board, and this court also appointed her for this position.
Thank you for taking the time to speak to us. We don't normally respond, but I'll just tell you that.
I'd like to make a comment. I am one of the board members who was listed as a reference for Dr., excuse me, for Jason Thompson. I had no knowledge of my name being used as a reference. I was never contacted by Mr. Thompson, nor anybody else by Mr. Thompson on his behalf for a reference to use my name as a reference. This information was shared with the board. I am not hiding everything from the public, nor would I hide anything from the public. I never gave any permission to have him use my name as a reference. I always indicated if people have questions, please feel free to reach out to me and ask me. I'm a volunteer for this district, one that I pride myself in being a volunteer and a board member, and I'm not going to sit here and allow people to say inaccurate information that they don't have any knowledge about. So I'm making it clear, I gave no authorization, nor was I contacted by Jason Thompson to use me as a reference. Thank you.
Okay. With that, we'll move on to consent agenda. Resolve that the Board of Education approved the consent agenda pursuant to the attached. Do I have a motion? Shelley? Wayne? Any discussion on any items?
I'll need to abstain on this vote due to a potential conflict on the instructional agenda.
Any other comments? Okay. With that, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? And with that, I would like to, oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. Seven zero one. Yes. Thank you for correcting me there. I'll just have to get the number right. What's that? Okay. And Tony, thank you for coming. I would like to welcome Ms. Melinda Howard to the district. She will be our new McNamara Elementary Principal for next school year. Okay, with that, we are moving into leadership report. So I will hand it over to Dr. Davis and her team to run through the leadership report items.
Thank you. Mr. Cardigan, Ms. Labakia, and RJ, are you presenting as well? Okay, very good. Thank you. We appreciate you presenting tonight.
So thank you for giving us some time to let you know the busy summer ahead of Gaza going on. So the first thing we just included was the puzzle piece we've talked about before. To let you know that when we look at, there's some with curriculum work, some with professional development, we're looking at all those puzzle pieces, how they connect. And so all of these offerings, one way or another, connect to those puzzle pieces. So on the next slide, Dr. Reverie, an example of how, you know, we just took some of them just to show that they all fit in one way or another to those puzzle pieces. So we're just keeping that theme alive. The next slide, if you, you don't have to look at it, but if you click on it yourselves, you'll see the entire offerings that the teachers and staff, teaching assistants received for the instructional, some non-instructional offerings. We're gonna highlight some of those today. You can go and look through it in depth. So at the, at the pre-K six levels, some of the highlights are we'll be doing our math program, the math program review, as I mentioned before. We've gone through an audit this past year, and now the math curriculum committee is coming together to look at some choices from different publishers of what is out there and what they would like to pile up next year, and we'll be back during, for the end of next year, hopefully for some approval for a new math program. Science of Reading is a buzzword that's out there, so we're gonna be doing some PD with our pre-K through six staff. What is the science of reading? Much of what they do now, and it's really more focused and more purposeful. And grading of report cards. Again, I've talked about this before, that the elementary is maybe patiently to really start working on their report cards and grading. So this is gonna begin their conversation with the committee. It will take probably a couple of years to go through, and we'll be reporting to you all during that process, you know, what that means for the district. Some professional development highlights at that level. Restorative practices, part two is continuing, so we train K through, well, pre-K through. Twelve, we've done training last summer with restorative team, restorative practice teams in each building. This is the part two of that, which talks more in depth about those students who struggle at a top tier two or tier three level, and how you have those kinds of conversations when students are struggling re-entering the classroom. And then, starting the year with intentionality. Again, this was offered last summer. It was asked by many teachers who didn't get a chance to go to it, to contact to it, and the call plans have not varied, but really just how can they start the year with intentionality and structure for a successful year ahead?
So on the special education side of, you know, summer offerings for teachers, we have, one of our occupational therapists this year really had presented to some of us a method. She came up with using Google Docs and Sheets to really streamline some progress monitoring and go electronic and make it a lot easier so that everything was in one place versus a system they used to kind of use where they were carrying their own binders. And really, she really just kind of took off with that, and we saw that and said, you really have to share this with other speech therapists, special education teachers, and staff to make those progress monitoring coding of goals a little bit easier. And so she's offering that this summer. We're doing self-directed IEPs, which you've probably heard us talk about before, is an initiative Mr. Nally brought to the district. It's really about self advocacy and students presenting at their own IEPs, even starting as young as kindergarten in some cases, where it might just be that they come to the meeting and introduce who's at the table, but they're part of the process, and then it's a continuum to the point where some seniors are presenting the whole entire meeting. It's really sort of meeting that process. So we continue to offer that to all of our staff, and they really become really innovative with it. We have some teachers that have even like made gains out of it, and so it's really neat. So we'll be offering that. Exceptional Child on Demand is a TA training. That's really an online platform that we offer for teaching assistants because, as you know, a lot of our teaching assistants work summer school, they are doing summer camps, and they need ongoing credits to keep their certification current. So this is a way to allow them to get those credits on their own time and pick trainings that are relevant to them. Maybe it's behavior management, maybe it's working with an honorable child. So it's a little bit more personalized that way. So we'll be offering that. IEP planning and preparation is something that we offer co-teaching teams once they're, we're still wrapping up annual reviews. Some students attend summer school, so toward the end of the summer, as we're starting to get into planning for next year, it's a time they can meet with their co-teaching teams to start reviewing IEPs and get familiar with what students need and really kind of get to know them before they start that first day in their classrooms. And then, on the mental health side, social emotional piece, we have Team Mental Health First Aid. You've heard us talk about mental health first aid. That's something we've offered to parents and staff in the community, which is really sort of being a first responder for mental health, identifying if someone's in crisis, what to do, where to go, how to help in the moment. And one of the things that we've really, again, just trying to grow and learn, moving forward, is that this year, we've talked about it in the past, some of our students, one of the first people they'll tell when they're struggling is a peer or a friend. And so Team Mental Health First Aid is a way we can train our staff through the summer to then train our tenth through twelfth graders next year through BOCSIS as part of a cohort, so that they can learn to identify when their friends are in struggle, what might be struggling, and what they can do in that moment to get them help. So that's something we'll be doing this summer. SEL curriculum, we continue to expand. You've heard some of those pieces. SEL, our curriculum is really second step, and this year it's, we're moving to an online platform, so we'll be taking some days to really train staff in that piece. We continue to expand at the middle school level because it's an interesting shift. You know, sixth grade is still elementary, seventh grade is second theory. They have an advisement time where they're able to kind of do both things that are required at elementary level. You really want to be explicit with your teaching and still teach some of those prioritized lessons, but then at seventh grade, you want to move toward really embedding some of those practices within the regular school day. So we continue to work on that. And then, seven, twelve, they're doing the four chords of SEL, which is really just those SEL signature practices to work with teachers that are interested in how to embed those practices within their daily instruction, because again, there's not an SEL class within the schedule or day. And then the comprehensive counseling plan committee work is, you know, the state mandates that we have a comprehensive school counseling plan, which includes curriculum, career development, social emotional, and then just achievement. And it includes many teachers, support staff. There's a program assessment. So what we do is we take the day in the summer to review the work we've done, see if we've accomplished our goals, look at data, and then plan goals for the following school year. And then you'll hear more about that data piece next year in the fall when we review the plan.
The next couple of slides were from Renee, who had to go up to the high school. So basically what she's outlined is the curriculum work they'll be doing at the secondary level, so you can look that through and see all that they have going on. And on the next slide, or Find Arts, Biz, and Health, also be working on their curriculum, and we have some PD opportunities through Arts and Education with the Find Arts Department. Last slide, Health and Safety, just gonna be doing their Merck training that we've talked about before, as well as CPR, EEG training, so that's going to continue. New this year, I'd say Mike has put together a lot with the Transportation Department for some professional training just for them. So you can see three of the offerings he's organized with his team to work with. And then we'll also be doing some work around Datrina, looking more at assessments. And then, as I said, they have user curriculum collaboration. We partnered with Arts and Education to come in. But I have to give a shout out overall to our learning coaches. Most of what you see this summer, when you click on that second slide and look at all the offerings, are instructional learning coaches, and, you know, again, we have five now, including our SEL coach, who worked really hard to develop a pretty comprehensive summer program.
Yeah, and on that note, I ran the separate slide, but I wanted to pull out some of the, some of the things that are associated more with technology from that course catalog for the summer. And again, the learning coaches put these trainings together. And one is training on Aristotle World's Classroom and Other Ed Tech. So it's open to K-12 teachers, and they can come in and learn how to use some of the tools that we have that, unless you're focused in a training, you know, with an instructor, you might not know are available to you. The other one, the big topic that we were talking about is Chat GTP and artificial intelligence. Just gonna do an overview about what that is and some trending and where it's going and how it might affect our business. It's not gonna go away. And I think the more that we educate ourselves on that, the better off we're gonna be, because it's gonna be something we'll be dealing with. The other one is kind of hand in hand is media literacy in lessons and how to be aware of how to navigate through media and pick out the nuggets of the good stuff and filter out some of the bad stuff. And also gonna do a training on digital, it's not training, it's work on digital standards alignment. The library's gonna be working with grade-level teachers to see where there's an alignment of those standards that they can work into the curriculum. And then, we're also gonna be supporting the drone technology courses as well as the social media marketing courses. Good stuff.
I had a quick question, actually. I know we do block some sites, like for students to use. Do we currently like block the Chat GTP type sites now? There's more than one now?
I do for students, just because we don't know what we're doing with it yet. I kept it open for teachers to explore. I know students, so if they, you know, have personal accounts, they're looking into it, see what's going on. But right now, as far as tied to their video accounts, we're, we're just hold for now.
And my other question on the drone program you mentioned, are we teaming with, I know some other school districts have some things in place. Are we teaming with them, or is that kind of a homegrown?
Well, there's a curriculum that's been, you know, adopted. It's kind of a package curriculum. I think there's one other school. It's kind of a package curriculum, and I think there's one other school, I can't remember the district that's using it right now. But yeah, we've, we've done research.
I know Liverpool has something going.
Yeah, we've done research with them to see what their practices are and how things are going, so we're kind of piggybacking off of that.
Yep, we are tied into a cohort with those GOCs.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, I missed the first part of your presentation, I'll take care of the cough. But I have a question and I'm not sure if it's, if Tony, if you can respond. Okay, Renee, about the pilot and the trade scale. This is a hands-on project at Ray, I don't know if it's just being located at Ray. But what are those areas of the area of trades that are going to be worked on and discussed?
Actually, it's actually the high school technology, teachers are working with students during that last week of school to do some work. So there's some renovations to the faculty room due to some damage there with cabinets. So they're getting them introduced to some hands-on skills. So there's, the technology department at Baker is putting this on. And depending on how that goes moving forward, you know, we could look at some other summer offerings or even opportunities for internships and externships with students during the, during the school year.
That's great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, on the agenda, the proposed reorganization.
Thank you, I will be presenting with Dr. Joe. Tonight, what we want to do is talk a little bit about administrative restructuring. I've had an opportunity to be here since the last week in January. So I have been on the inside and able to really take a look at efficiencies and take a look at job descriptions and how things function. One of my first goals when I came here is I sat down with every administrator and talked to them for a significant amount of time about their job duties. And then I have been observing and watching and giving feedback as we move along. And I can tell you for sure, we have a phenomenal administrative team throughout the district that cares about the students. With that said, I took a look at the overview of the district. We've approximately 550, 5,500 students enrolled, five elementary schools, pre-K to five, one middle school, six, seven, one junior high, eight, nine, one high school, grades 10, 12. I can say I was interim here in 2018, so I had a really good close look at Ray Middle School. So you close to 1,000 students walking in every morning and it's just an awesome site when those buses unload. So I can tell you that our administrative teams are working at full capacity. We employ approximately 1,300 employees. That is incredible. 650 instructional staff, 300 support professionals, 25 administrative staff, and 325 substitutes. A little bit about our district that I think is important, yeah, I don't know how to do that, okay. All schools are designated, all, all schools are designated for local support and improvement, formerly known as good standing by the New York State Education Department. So kudos to all of our staff that made that happen this year. Over the past 10, last 10 years, our student population has grown to be more diverse. Our graduation rate is consistently above 90%. Our students are present over 90% of the instructional day, so our attendance is good. Approximately 90% of our students pass region's level courses. Our expenditures per pupil, 16,755. We are the second lowest per pupil expenditure for our comparable group. No designation for fiscal stress monitoring, so our business office is well-functioning and doing a great job. So thank you Tiffany and Kim and all of our professionals in the business office. I'm just going to go over some findings since I've been here. We have seen 10 changes, five of which were acting or interim superintendents since 2014, which creates a lot of instability for any district. We anticipate four key retirements in central office over the next four years. This will impact our operations. The job market is depleted for qualified administrative candidates. Recent searches yielded only six candidates for Director of PPS, 15 candidates for the position of principal, and nine candidates for Assistant Superintendent of Management Services. For a district of this level, we would, we should see double those numbers, if not triple those numbers, because Baldwinsville is a place to go to. The Office of Teaching Initiatives requires school building leader certificate holders to participate in a metric program their first year of employment. We currently are without a formal program. Future impacts, Joe?
So we know, when we think about this, you know, with micron shift in what we're being told, we're anticipating over 40,000 new jobs being reported to our communities. And so thinking about how we can better support our, our staff to provide students with the opportunities that they need to be successful in a, in a global market. We believe some of these shifts administratively will help us get where we need to be. We anticipate projected enrollment increases due to that micron chip manufacturing plant being housed in the Clay area. We know that with funding improvements and building the future, we have additional capital project work to begin. We're starting that process this month with stakeholder groups and seeking input from our community. We know that this administrative realignment and structure will help us better manage future projects of that magnitude so that we can ensure that all of our students have access to the highest quality facilities and instruction. And we know that our curriculum and instruction, our programs are going to be impacted. We heard earlier today about the trades, how does that impact our students? What offerings and opportunities do we provide them, starting at the middle school level right through, through high school? And how does that impact in our elementary schools? Administratively, we know that, we believe that these changes will provide better support, efficiency as we move forward. And what we're also happy to see with this restructuring is, and you'll see in a few slides, Dr. Davis will highlight this, that there is some fund redistribution and savings because of the new proposed administrative structure that we're looking at, which may create opportunities for other emerging focus areas of the arts and, and safety as many board members have highlighted previously. So our recommendations at this, at this point are to think about how succession planning impacts our greater stability as a district to move forward and to keep and grow our own talent. We are proposing at this point with my appointment to eliminate the Deputy Superintendent position and to create the title of Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, pre-K through 12. We would be eliminating one of the director positions, we already discussed. We eliminated the Director of Special Education and re-titled that to Assistant Superintendent for Student Services to really focus in on a growth mindset with our population that is so important to us. We have provided the board with job descriptions for the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction and Assessment as well as Student Services. We are proposing to revise the titles for greater efficiency in communication, clearer transparency with regard to the scope of the job responsibilities for two of our director positions. The first being what was previously the Director of Curriculum Instruction, K to seven, and then the Director of Curriculum Instruction, grade seven through 12. And so we're looking at revising those titles to Director of Elementary Education and Director of Secondary Education. We again feel that by making that shift, it's clear for our community when you think about our chain of command and reporting. It makes it easier for families to know who to go to when, when they've exhausted all options with elementary level principal work. Who's the next person in line? Help support our families, our teachers, and our staff. Same thing for the secondary level with the Director of Secondary Education. We've also reassigned the job responsibilities of the Deputy Superintendent. You'll see those are highlighted on this slide, I don't need to go through them in depth, but you'll see a little bit, bits and pieces placed with some of our other key central office administrators throughout the district. There's the job description of the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction, a portion of it. We see this person ultimately overseeing all of the instructional and curriculum components related to the opportunities it would provide our students. There's the job description for the Assistant Superintendent for Student Services. Again, focusing mainly on the social emotional support of all of our students as well as ensuring that students that are designated under Section 504 and students labeled as having a disability are supported. This is an example of what the current organizational structure looks like and with our proposed shift. And as I alluded to, some of the benefits, we believe it's going to create that upper level stability for our new directors, our principals, assistant principals. Dr. Davis mentioned about the Leadership Mentoring Program. By having the Director of Secondary Education, Director of Elementary Education, and our two Assistant Superintendents, they will better support our new principals and new assistant principals in our district and help us to coordinate our mentoring program for them. And we believe, again, this is going to build a stronger team, improve our communications, better define those efficiencies regarding job responsibilities and support, and enhance that chain of command for all of our stakeholders.
So we're not looking at adding any new positions. We're looking at realigning and our cost savings over a four-year period. So when you use a succession plan, you know who's going to be in the positions, you can trend your data out. By changing the job title, Deputy Superintendent carries with it a higher salary and more responsibility. But if you're, since we're recommending Dr. Joe tonight for Superintendent, he has such great institutional knowledge that there is no need for a Deputy Stu. However, there is a need for an Assistant Stu, so that that position is more focused on providing support for our administrative team, our students, our curricular needs. So over a four-year period, there's a cost savings of $375,000, a little over that, which is, makes us a little more efficient. As Dr. Joe said earlier, you know, we are already operating efficiently, but this, this new tiered approach will provide that level of support that we need. We have projected retirements and it will, it will give us an internal opportunity to provide that, that strong year of mentorship that is required by the State Education Department that is currently, a formal program is currently lacking. We did provide you comparable or district organizational structures, just so you could see in the next few slides. These are districts that are in surrounding areas, this is real data. We did not put the names on the schools, however, I can provide that to the board later as I didn't feel authorized to be talking about another school's data. But it gives you an idea if you look at our summary of comparable schools. Baldwinsville has an enrollment of 5,500. Central Office Administrators, Directors, and Assistant Stus, we have 15. That student to administrator ratio is 367 to one. District A, we has 4,500 students, 14 central office administrators, 321 to one. District B, 6,700, has 22, 305 to one. District Three, 7,671, 21, 365. District D, 5,200, and so on. I guess my point here is we took a look at comparable schools in the area with similar enrollments and we are the highest ratio of students to administrators. So we are really operating lean and that is without the future of micron and the anticipated increase in our enrollment. So it's really critical when you know these things are happening, retirements, increased enrollment, that we really need to look at our internal strength and we need to recognize what we have for talent internally. Bring up that institutional knowledge, create some stability. We have been a district in crisis and in constant instability with leadership in and out. And eventually it takes its toll, not only on our, our staff, but our students and our community. So it's time that we really look at our talent within and grow that. In closing, our final thoughts, and I love this, Phil Jackson, the strength of the team is each individual member. The strength of each member is the team. So with that said, we really need to come together. This is a great school, there are no problems here. The problem with this district is we need to wrap our arms around how great we are and how great our students are and start performing and embracing each other and really honestly respecting each other and just grow as a team and really tap into the talents that we have. I'm proud to be here, this is my second time here, and I remain proud of this district. And I'm just so excited about this, this plan because we really took a look, since I've been here in January, I really took a look and really took some time to listen. I heard Mindy say that she's going to be a good listener, our new principal. I did listen to our administration, I know what they want, I know what they need right now. And I know that they have a high level of trust for each other and rely on each other. And all the transitions that have happened over the past 10 years, they have gotten closer and have this, kept this district moving forward, I'm so proud of them. So with that said, I'm hoping the board, you know, accepts my plan tonight and we can move forward as a district and really get going. Because we need to, we're out of time. We have to have administrators in place by July 1 in central office. This is our time to write grants, our time to get schedules in place and get programs in place for students. So we can't, we can't leave blank holes and we can't go back to having, you know, administrators do two and three jobs. It's just not doable anymore, they're tired. It's time that we, you know, get, get going, get moving forward and let's do what's best for students here. It saves the district money, it gives us a long-range plan, and it gives us an opportunity to build on our strength.
Thank you for that presentation, do we have questions? We'll go back to the floor for questions.
I have a couple of questions. First, I just wanted to say thank you for all the information, it's very helpful. When we were talking about the ratios of office staff to students, is there any kind of expected ratio or, because I know certain classrooms and ages, there's like a ratio you have to be under like law, is there anything with that or no?
No, there's no ratios in law for, you know, administrators to students. But what you do, what I do is I take a look at comparable data and I take a look at tasks that each administrator has to do and then capacity. So I have to look at their, I know the tasks that they do because I've sat in all those positions. And know, you know, we only have 185 days in a year and, you know, for school year and how much of that can be done by each individual administrator, so it's carefully examined. There are a lot of high-stake activities that they're doing in terms of our grants and handling millions of dollars. So, you know, making sure that those particular administrators that have those opportunities have the time to sit, reflect, and write those grants so that they're accepted and they're accurate.
I had one more comment and I know Joe brought it up. With the restructuring, it does offer opportunities for the arts and safety and that kind of thing. And I know there's a lot of stuff going on with the Fine Arts Program. Wednesday, there's the CNY Film Festival. Friday, there's a theater celebration, end of the year theater celebration. And like Tony was talking about, the arts and ads, of course, we got the instruments. It feels like, I know that maybe not a director is anything we can do tomorrow, but what about like an administrative assistant or something to help? And I know that, you know, Tony and Renee do a great job, but to have somebody that's able to like dive into those needs. Shelley brought up going to a concert, I think they almost doubled or tripled their concerts, you know, doing combined concerts and those types of things. So I just want to put it out there that, you know, I know that we're doing everything we can for the students but providing those supports for the staff so that they are able to offer all of those opportunities to our students.
So this upcoming year, we're going to be putting all those instruments in place. Dr. Joe has put that plan together and it's going to be coming to fruition. So I do believe that the program's going to really explode with students and we're going to, I agree with you, Wayne, we are going to need some level of supervision to help out with the arts because our program is just, you know, has grown and it will continue to grow and we'll need some oversight.
I also forgot, I tried to make a list of things, but we added the play for the Theater Department as well. So, I just know that there's a lot of stuff going on, on right now, and I just wouldn't want any of it to get missed, and I think it'd be helpful to have somebody that's able to get in and focus on those things. So, again, I know we've talked about it, but I just wanted to kind of put it out there and maybe put some urgency on there.
And it seems as if saving 375K over that time, you know, that frees up some money to, you know, potentially get some positions where strategically would be very useful.
You also have some liability dropping off in October, so that will help you out.
Just wanted to thank you, Dr. Davis, for coming in and really diving into this in-depth analysis, you know, bringing that outside perspective and that outside lens with your, you know, vast experience and, and many other districts, and really bringing that here to do this analysis, and, and thank you, Dr. DeBarbury, for bringing that inside, internal lens in terms of the, the depth analogy you have about district in terms of presenting this. I think it's very helpful, it's very depth, it's very, very comprehensive, so, thank you.
And just so, thank you, I appreciate the support. I did complete a 53-page report, so my analysis isn't just the PowerPoint, you know, I did to dive into every area, so was able to really detail out, you know, where we are, where we need to go, so, thank you.
I also wanted to thank you for doing this slide presentation, and I'm happy to see that the mentorships program will be coming back, and we'll be able to have our administrators and our principals, so thank you.
Yeah, another thing, you know, I was just looking back on how many times we've kind of discussed this as a board, starting back in early March, when, you know, kind of your first assessment. And I appreciate, you know, as we went through and asked questions, you guys kind of molded it over time, you know, through March, April, May, looking at some of the updates you made. So, you know, I think it's, you know, this has been a lot of work over the last several months, and all the different aspects that you guys have presented to us, not only as a board, but in Friday letters and provided the information. So, I appreciate the listening too, and the, you know, helping us understand as we go. I think probably for the first time in 12 years, when we've talked about reord to the comparisons to the, the like districts, I think is a, you know, it's nice to know that we're not, you know, basically inventing something from scratch here. We're, we're taking best practices and seeing what's, what's working out in other districts of our similar size and makeup, so, so I do appreciate the, the things. You know, you're, you hit on some of the growth that we're going to have to encounter, so I think setting us up for some of that growth, you know, those of us having to the CNY School Board Dinner, I've heard a lot of that, and, you know, I keep my fingers crossed that we'll see some of that, that doesn't always come to full fruition, but even if it's part of what they're expecting to come to this area, we could definitely see ourselves in, you know, it's going to challenge us on the Facility Committee, and, you know, making sure we have an agile structure here, you know, is going to help too of being prepared for some of those coming changes, and I think we're going to see a lot of changes coming in the next probably decade, so. Appreciate the information, thank you. End it up.
No, I just wanted to ask, thank you, Dr. Davis and Dr. DeBarbury for working on this and presenting this presentation this evening. I just had one question, because there is the importance of the mentoring, the mentorship program, and I just want to make sure that since there's such strong beliefs that it needs to occur and continue, I'm just curious as to what happened with the program previously, and what had, what will be set into place to make sure that the program continues long-term?
So, I can speak, previously was more of an informal mentoring program. It's actually now being embedded within the district's professional learning plan. So, later on in the agenda, when you approve the updated professional learning plan for the district under New Business, there was always a teacher section, a support staff section. Now, there is an administrative section in that plan as well, so the district, it's expected that we follow that plan moving forward.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the Board? I guess, one last question. Next step, should I proceed from here on this? We don't vote on it necessarily?
Well, we, we will, we have some personnel that's attached to this that we'll have to discuss, and then we'll all come out later and make some recommendations.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much. Okay, no other questions? We'll move on to the next proposal draft of V O E meetings in format.
So, we provided this, I know when I had some conversation with the Board, thinking about efficiencies and working together and providing, what I believe, some, some greater transparency and discussions and conversations, and help be more efficient with our meetings, we're proposing a potential change to the way that we run our, our meetings, if you're agreeable to that, and certainly it's your choice as a Board. But there are a lot of districts around the state that have one, what we would term as a business meeting, where there's a lot of action items, and then there's one workshop. That workshop model would allow a lot of these reports to be done in a, in a more collaborative, open, interactive session that's, that's open to the public, just like the regular Board of Education meetings. I think it might be a process that would provide, again, more transparency and also flexibility from the Board to ask questions with our administrators and our staff. So, we're proposing regular meetings to be the first, essentially the first meeting of the month at 7:00 PM, similar to, similar to the normal format, and then we'd have a workshop, the second meeting of the month, which would begin at 5:00. And we can work with the Board moving forward with the topics that would be the focus of those workshops. Certainly, if we were to leave a workshop and there was pressing need, we could all also have a special meeting attached to that, which would allow the Board to have action items, but that would be the proposal moving forward. It actually gives us a little bit more meetings than we've had in previous years, and it also allows us to, you know, do some of the work that maybe a few of the committees have been doing in a, in a more collaborative setting.
Yeah, so I'll just add for a couple of our new Board members, we, we talked about this earlier in the year, as kind of a, you know, potentially a new way of doing things. It doesn't cut down on the number of meetings, but it was thought that those workshop meetings would be, you know, we wouldn't be taking actions and doing the, doing the same things like we're doing today. It's more, as Joe, Joe said, a collaborative, you know, working environment where we can get things proposed and done that way, and then the next meeting, of course, take action. My question, would we expect to see an executive session each one, or only potentially in the regular meetings, and then as needed in the workshops, or how would that, how would exec session type stuff work?
Well, we'd have to, we'd have to end the workshop and open a, a meeting, a regular business meeting, special meeting, and I certainly defer to the attorney in the audience for the district, and then we would have to go into executive session. But we, we've done that previously.
Yeah.
But the goal would be to hopefully do all of that business work on the first of the month.
Yeah, once in a while, we get a very timely thing we have to address in exec, so I assume we could add that. And all these will be posted with the normal, the normal timeframes that we always do, so if we had to add exec session, it would be part of the normal process.
Yeah, just like we typically do, it would be, you know, released, our agendas would be released for, for both the business meeting and the workshop on Thursday, as traditionally done, and all of these would be on, on Monday.
I guess the, so my last thing, I guess, and I'm not, I won't be on the Board next year, but I guess it would be, you know, interesting to see if the Board, you know, wanted to meet on Mondays at 5:00. I know sometimes 5:00 can be a challenge, so that may be a discussion about the incoming Board of, what do they want to do about Board time, you know, meeting times, but that's just my thought.
Yeah, and then the only thing with that, we just thought it would just provide a little bit more time, so we're not going late into the evening if staff is staying after work to, to do the presentations and to have, to be a part of the dialogue during the workshops, but certainly there's flexibility, and we recognize that all of you are, you know, have other things to do than, than this work, so, you know, if you'd like the structure, then we certainly can proceed forward. We're planning, and the new Board can adapt, you know, with changes. We would also bring this discussion forward with the new Board members of the orientation for them in June.
Because essentially, this would be, this calendar would be approved at the July 10 reord meeting?
Correct.
So, no decisions here, this is just more of a proposal.
Yeah.
I agree with Jeff, I really like the proposal. I know in the past, we had tried to dedicate some second-month meetings to workshops, but not on every month. But anything that would give us more collaboration, discussion, and bring in more public comment, I think would be positive. I, I also wonder, maybe 6:00 is a better time, because people are working, but, but I certainly understand you have a lot of late nights and maybe, and a lot of early mornings, so maybe anything to lessen the late nights would be positive, so, good idea, I like it.
I, I do have a couple of questions, some of them have already been addressed. I, I just need for clarification, so, would the workshop be essentially a Board meeting or just a workshop? And I'm questioning that, because if it's just a workshop, are you envisioning small group sessions? Because if it's considered a meeting, you have to make sure that everybody is heard and there isn't forum discussing amongst, within those different sections or what you're envisioning.
I just want to respond with my own, I'll take you. I am not a technology person, RJ knows that. So, in my experiences, and again, you don't have to do it based on my experience, but the Board would meet during the Board Retreat, identify, take a look at your data, take a look at your Board goals, and then identify topics for the year. That way, it gives the administrative team time to prepare the information and data that you want brought, brought forth. So, those are mapped out for each month, and that way, everybody knows where we're heading. Sometimes it's bringing in experts. You may want to bring in people to speak about specific topics that would move you forward when you're about, you know, a lot of it's tied to policy development, or you have interest in, you know, curricular topics. There's a plethora of ways you can do it. Joe, did you have a different, Dr. Joe, did you have a different?
The only other piece I would add is, you know, the idea, similar to the data workshop that we held, would be similar to that. I mean, obviously, there'd be the microphones, there'd be the systems that we have in place so that those in the audience would be able to, to hear and communicate, but I think it, again, it creates a, a different environment than this. Maybe the microphones are there, but the tables are, you know, with one big table with the Board working with those that are, you know, presenting information.
Okay, I think I understand. So, having said that, they'll still be recorded and livestreamed the second, sorry, the public second meeting or workshop?
I mean, that's the Board's decision at this point, but we've committed to, you know, recording and zooming our, our meetings.
Okay, because for open, you know, open meetings, law, and what our policy states with public speaking and people being able to speak, we have to be, we have to make sure that we're going to continue with that, allowing people to come and speak, even though it's a workshop, because it's considered an open.
So, if the Board, the Board would have to make an adjustment to the current policy, because the current policy, I believe, if I, if I'm correct, indicates that the Board, the public would have the ability to speak at a regular meeting, certainly unless the, through agenda planning, it's decided differently, but I believe that's what the policy states. But again, moving forward, we didn't want to put the cart before the horse. If the Board's in agreement, then certainly we can pull the policies and make recommendations for adjustments.
Okay. And I, I am on the same page about the timing. We are all volunteers, some of us have a difficult time getting here for 7:00, and I understand those administrators and teachers and staff also have a job, and it's difficult to stay late in the evening as well. But I, I'm not, as of right now, just seeing, you know, happening, discussion, I'm not a proponent of starting them at 5:00, but I know there'll be more discussion going forward and moving forward, so, thank you.
Process question, so if we, if this Board were to approve, say, this calendar here on July 10th, and then assess, say, in November, December, is this new format working, and let's say there's a decision that, no, I think we liked the process before, because it was voted on on July 10th, is, can that be amended or changed at that point? I assume anything can be changed if the Board agrees, right?
Kind of, it's not working.
Just, just leaving that out there, that, you know, it may be worth a trial time and assess in December and say, do we want to change the rest of the school year and continue it? And I'm sure things will be tweaked along the way as we find what works best, just throwing that out there.
I have one last question. Thanks for bringing that point up, Jeff, that's a great, great suggestion. You indicated other school districts follow this format or use this format. What are some of those districts that use those formats?
I mean, we could put that in the Friday letter, off the top of my head, and there's, there's a lot. But I don't want to single anybody out publicly without making sure.
We'll provide a report for you.
Okay.
So, was I, I sympathize with you more now, because everyone said pretty much everything I was going to say. But no, I just wanted to echo, the, the data workshop was great, and I think that this would be good to build that collaboration. And Dr. Davis, you had brought up the retreats, so my question, are we still going to be having retreats, or are these kind of replacing them or part of them, or?
So, I'm sorry, go ahead.
We still have a few retreats that are listed here.
Okay.
Officially, like we've had several years.
Joe says what I think, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Just for clarification, a retreat is not open to the public, or act in a workshop is open to, to the public?
The retreat would really be an opportunity to revise your Board goals, to set systems up, gives you an opportunity to have very personalized training just for the Board. They're non-channel topics, they're specific to the Board growth, setting up your evaluation process for yourselves, which is something I don't know if you have in place, but it's something that I would recommend that you do that yearly, so that you can, again, it might be something you've done, I just, I haven't been here all year, just half the year, so, I highly recommend it.
Okay, so we'll, thank you for the information, and discuss it. I guess the only chance we have really to discuss it again is one more meeting before you have to vote on it, so. Okay. So, with that, we'll move on to first reading of Policy 3420, and suggesting that it be retired.
The reason this is being retired is it is in other policies. It was recommended after review from the Policy Committee from legal that we no longer needed this policy, so that's why it's being recommended to retire.
Okay. And with that, I think we will have a couple of people in the second row here ready for this next one, so they can go. You've been very good, by the way. Okay, moving on to New Business, Resolution to Appoint the Superintendent of Schools and Approve Employment Agreement. Resolved that the Board of Education approved the resolution to appoint the Superintendent of Schools and approve the employment agreement pursuant to the attached. Do I have a motion?
Sure. Second.
Man. Okay, any discussion? Okay, being none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed?
I, I oppose, but I'd like to indicate as to why. I am opposing to the contract for Superintendent DeBarbury for the following reasons. This is nothing personal, it has to do with the process and the procedure of what occurred. We as a Board started negotiations with a proposal, proposed contract with bias by legal counsel before we as a Board had our first discussion concerning a contract. I truly believe that this contract is what is in the best interest of the new Superintendent and not what is in the best interest for this Board and future Boards, whose main responsibility is to employ and hold. whose main responsibility is to employ and hold accountable the superintendent on behalf of our community. There's language in the contract that strips authority provided in educational law away from the Board of Education and gives authority to an outside entity regarding employment of the superintendent. Unfortunately, this is what happens when you appoint an employee without a contract, a Greek contract, which was done back in February and why I was affirmed no of this appointment. My vote to no in no way means that I will not support Dr. DeBarbury and the work that he is going to be doing for our district and our Board of Education.
May I say a few words? Jeff, may I say a few words? I just want to say, and again, just for my own personal, first of all, foremost, first and foremost, I know people don't like to hear this, but this is my nineteenth year as a superintendent. And I'm going to say it one more time. I've been in at least thirteen districts. And the contract that Dr. DeBarbury had certainly is a standard contract that I've seen many superintendents have. And it is a common practice that some schools do appoint approval of the contract, some wait. But it's not specific to any one particular style. Different schools do different things. And there was a process. This is called succession planning. And it's based on building the strength with, from within, which many schools do. So I am a advocate for the process that was used. The Board of Education did meet with Dr. DeBarbury prior to making the decision. I can't get into details, but there was a meeting. It was a special meeting and that was our process. We also took a look at a survey that we did out to the community. We had a boardroom filled with people that were advocating for keeping the person they had already in place. I'm very proud of Dr. DeBarbury and I'm honored to be working with him. After nineteen years, I've learned from Dr. DeBarbury. And, you know, it's hard to teach me things because I'm old, going to be sixty-two this year. But I believe it or not, he has taught me many things and I've learned from him. And I am excited for this district, his contract. We did comparables and we took a look at what other school districts comparables were. And he certainly is in alignment. He's been here over twenty years. And he has shown his commitment and love, not only for this district, but for these children, and he cares. I could call Joe at two o'clock in the morning and say there's an issue with the school. He goes, don't worry, I got it. I'll be there. We spoke at four-thirty in the morning, all winter, with Mike Turney, three of us. He's up at four-thirty in the morning, right there, making sure those buses are there safely. So it is with great honor that I have worked with him and I'm very proud.
And I would say, Dr. Davis, I believe the majority of this board agrees with that. So with that, do I have, I don't know, all those in favor? Did we? Man, it's been a long night. Well, congratulations to. Thank you for staying. And grab one of those big cakes on your way out. And have it for breakfast. Okay. Resolution to approve architectural engineering services for the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four capital outlay project. Resolve that the Board of Education approve the resolution for architectural engineering services for the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four capital outlay project pursuant to the attached. Can I have a motion? Wayne? Matt? Any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay, passes seven-zero. Next, resolve that the Board of Education approve the resolution for architectural engineering services for the twenty-twenty-three sixty-three-point-nine million dollar capital improvement project pursuant to the attached. Can I have a motion? Vic?
Second.
Wayne? Any discussion? What was the ultimate percent passing on that one, Joe? It was a capital project. I don't remember exactly.
Seventy-one, seventy-two.
Significant support from our constituents, so we appreciate that. Shelley?
Yeah, excuse me, Jeff. Are we supposed to be doing roll call, roll call on these?
No, no, no. Roll call's coming up.
Roll call votes earlier.
Oh, just attached to it now. I apologize.
I think it indicates that it's only roll call if it's not E F N G. And those are listed. E F N G. But thank you for asking. Okay, so let's see. So all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Passes seven-zero. Moving on to D, resolve that the Board of Education approve the textbook adoption of the cosmic perspective by Jeffrey Bennett, Megan Donahue, Nicholas Schneider, and Martin Voight for grades ten through twelve astronomy classes pursuant to the attached. Do I have a motion?
Move.
Shelley? Second. Vic? Any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Passes seven-zero. Okay, E, this one will be a roll call vote. Resolve that the Board of Education approve the bond resolution for the purchase authorization of student transportation vehicles for the Balden Hill Central School District pursuant to the attached. Do I have a motion?
Move.
Shelley?
Second.
Matt? Any discussion? Okay, with that, Kim?
Wayne Davison?
Yes.
Michelle Gekel?
Yes.
Victor Jenkins?
Yes.
Jeffrey Marier?
Yes.
Donald Miller?
Yes.
Sherry Shraeven?
Yes.
Matthew Yeager?
Yes.
Thank you.
Moving on to F, this is again a roll call vote. Resolve that the Board of Education approve the bond resolution for the Balden Hill Central School District capital improvement project pursuant to the attached. Kind of a motion?
Move.
Vic? Second?
Second.
Matt? Any discussion? Okay. Kim?
Wayne Davison?
Yes.
Michelle Gekel?
Yes.
Victor Jenkins?
Yes.
Jeffrey Marier?
Yes.
Donald Miller?
Yes.
Sherry Shraeven?
Yes.
Matthew Yeager?
Yes.
Thank you.
She, another roll call vote. Resolve that the Board of Education approve the bond resolution for the Balden Hill Central School District twenty-twenty-three land acquisition pursuant to the attached. Have a motion?
Move.
Wayne?
Same.
Any questions? Okay, all, Kim?
Wayne Davison?
Yes.
Michelle Gekel?
Yes.
Victor Jenkins?
Yes.
Jeffrey Marier?
Yes.
Donald Miller?
Yes.
Sherry Shraeven?
Yes.
Matthew Yeager?
Yes.
Back to H, this is a regular vote. Resolve that the Board of Education approve the resolution to opt out of exemption under section four-eighty-seven of real property tax law pursuant to the attached. Have a motion?
Move.
Matt? Wayne? Okay, any discussion?
I have a question. Can someone explain what this is, please?
I think I can. We've gone through this before, right? This has been something we've adhered to, that we do not grant a tax exemption for solar projects. In other words, if somebody wanted to build a solar project and we granted an exemption for it, that would mean that burden would be shifted to all the other residents. So we have taken the stance in the past, or last time I was with the board, we took the stance that solar projects are good projects, but they need to be on their own finances, not using tax exemptions.
Thank you, Victor.
Anything else? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Pases seven-zero. Next, item I, resolve that the Board of Education approve Balden Hill Central School District's professional learning plan for the period July first, twenty-twenty-three through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-six pursuant to the attached. Have a motion?
Move.
Matt? Same? Okay, any discussion?
I have a question. In reviewing the professional learning team membership, who, it talks of the parent, parent teacher association. That's obviously the PTA. How are those individuals selected, just to make sure for our shared policy, for our shared decision?
It's the same process that we discussed earlier in the school year where we put it out to the parent teacher association members. And then we also did a blast to the entire school community, asking and soliciting volunteers to serve on this committee because we didn't receive anybody coming forward when it was brought up at our joint PTA meeting. And so the individuals that have been participating this year were the ones that submitted a request to be on the committee when we put it out through social media and our district website.
Thanks, Jeff.
Okay, any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Pases seven-zero. Moving on to item J, resolve that the Board of Education approve the contract transportation agreement pursuant to the attached. Kind of a motion?
Move.
Second? Wayne? Okay, any questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Pases seven-zero. Next up, K, central treasurer. Resolve that Kim Byall be appointed to serve as the school district's central treasurer. Extra class student activity accounts effective May twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-three without additional compensation. Can I have a motion?
So.
Matt? Second? Matt? Any discussion? Did you get your question answered or did you want to?
Thanks, Jeff. No, I just, I made mention to, to Kim that I was just asking to make sure it was clarified since Kim is in her role oversees the position of central treasurer if everything is kosher, you know, legit. So I just wait here on that response.
And we did receive a response, and then I know you responded back, so I didn't want to forward to the board until we got. And I don't know that I ever saw a response to your question, but I figured you can explain it better than I would.
Sure. So yes, with oversight, it is possible for me to have those dual capacity roles. It is permitted. The situation was such that we had both our central treasurer and deputy central treasurer out unexpectedly for a two-week time period. In this time of year, the year is a ton of student activities going on. And we were at a point where we had to get checks out the door or people were going to lose their reservations for things of significant importance at this time of year. So honestly, my actions in regards to that was for a very short time period. The deputy treasurer is back now and that role will go directly back to her now that she's back in the district.
Thank you.
I believe in that letter, which I will forward to the board if there's, I was waiting for a response on your questions, but without, with absence of that, I'll just forward it to the board. But the supervision was provided by the superintendent is what was stated.
Correct. And the only thing I was clarifying was central treasurer versus regular treasurer that oversees general funds, but the answer was still the same.
Okay, very good. So I'll get that out to you later. I'll just for the delay there. Any other questions? Okay, being none. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Pases seven-zero. Lastly, disposal of surplus equipment instructional materials. Resolve that the Board of Education approve the disposal of surplus equipment instructional materials pursuant to the attached. Do I have a motion?
Move.
Shelley?
Second.
Wayne? Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Pases seven-zero. And with that, we will move into board roundtable. I did mention upfront, we do have a few dates to select for our upcoming legal RFPs. The due date is the ninth, Friday, and the opening of those RFPs will be at the district office at three PM by Kim. So that leaves us, we did have a stated timeline of the twelfth where we would review those. I believe after looking at the calendars of everything going on around graduation and all other things in the district. It was proposed if June fourteenth was amenable to the paper screen or the reviews of those. And then giving those legal firms a week to prepare for interviews on the twenty-first so that there can be a final selection on the twenty-sixth, which I believe is a verbal commitment. And the official appointment is on the tenth, if I crack believe if that's the timeline right. So is there any discussion around those dates of the fourteenth for, that's a Wednesday, by the way. A paper screen on Wednesday, the fourteenth, and a interviews on the twenty-first. That gives all those firms seven days' notice to prepare for those.
So the RFP that went out gave flexibility that it was the sole discretion of the board to change those dates. So we're not tied to those dates.
Oh, we're not tied to the dates that notice for the RFP?
No, Jeff, there's a collated section at the top of the chart.
Right, you're saying the following timeline is subject to change according to the RFP. But the only real change is, we said we do the paper screen on the twelfth and what's being proposed for the fourteenth. The other one, the interviews are the twenty-first, which would be in between the dates that we stated. So I guess, is there any?
I have an objection to what time, what time we want for the fourteenth and the twenty-first.
Any suggestions on time? Would you want to start? Earlier, later, I would think for interviews, we, because we could have potentially four, five, six type interviews. I don't think we want to start too late. We're giving what's typical, half hour? Let's just say half hour times four to six, that's still two to three hours, so we probably don't want to start too late. Propose five?
I'll be unavailable and out of town for the year, the interviews, unfortunately. But if there's a significant representation of the board, I certainly respect your judgment.
So I think, given no real opposition, we'll go with five o'clock on those two days to get this done before our meeting on the twenty-sixth.
And so with the paper screening, is there any kind of timeframe on that? Or it's just a matter of going through them, discussing, and then deciding who we want to call back or whatever?
Be reviewing them, I guess, and asking any questions amongst the board and then deciding who to bring in. It's basically interview, you know, going through resumes and picking who you want to interview, right?
Okay, thank you.
So I would say it'd be better there in a half hour, but I'm assuming there's enough stuff to look at that it's going to take longer.
I'm just going to hold you to that half.
Okay, that's all I had for board roundtable. Anyone else? With that, we will move into executive, or I will propose executive session. Motion, can I give a motion for executive session to discuss the employment history of a particular person or negotiations? Wayne? Second? Matt? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate the attendance.